What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at ICM multi-way squeeze spots with thirty percent of the field left, thirty-seven percent. So I don't wanna squeeze squeeze the king six here, let's try another one. Yeah. Jack eight, are we gonna have to mess with the hands a little bit? Oh, twenty big blinds. This seems to be a call to me.
We're calling like almost all of it. Right?
Yeah.
No, actually. We're gonna be folding a decent amount of suited in ICM.
Like we hit that queen six now, but the jack six is pretty close and like we're mixing it, right? Queen seven, jack seven, there's slivers here. So yeah, we're pretty short, we're a little bit short.
And actually, Louis, if you move the call back to the low jack instead of the button.
Yeah.
And then are, we're gonna be folding a lot more suited hands.
Yeah, that's right. Even queen jack, yeah. Okay.
Queen jack's kinda interesting, I don't think I would have folded that there.
Never. Not here. I think. Okay, 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 okay. So. I'm gonna help it out a little bit.
Louis. Instead manually change, just click close decisions.
Probably.
Is that new? I feel like that wasn't there recently.
It's kind of new.
Yeah. I've never really tried it, so I don't know how the hand selection is gonna turn out.
You know what, Joey, it used to be close decisions before. And like you notice the pattern, that's what it was like a long time ago, then they they kind of added hand selections, and this seems to be a fold.
Yeah. Folded.
I don't think it's a close decision, I mean, what do you, what do you do with ace nine, you fold? What do you do? Ace ten is closer, right? No, you fold still.
Yeah. I think ace tens are folds as well.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Well, ace nine or ace ten might have a couple slivers making this.
Wow. Queen.
All right, we got tricked.
His jack is a fold.
Is that?
No, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would have folded that probably too.
Yeah, but keep in mind, this is thirty-seven percent of the field left, so we can probably fold here.
Yeah, fold. I think so. It's just a bottom.
So stupid question. Near the bubble versus thirty-seven percent, what do you think mathematically is the difference?
Uh, as you like progress to the bubble, you get tighter and tighter and tighter.
No, 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 I mean on the, in the program, in the program, what's their mathematical difference?
What do you, what do you mean by that question? What do you mean mathematically?
Okay, so, so what, first of all, what percentage of the field is making the money?
It's always gonna be like eleven to fifteen percent.
Okay, so, so then near the bubble is gonna be like, like probably twenty percent then versus thirty-seven percent, that's my question.
So what do you mean twenty-seven, thirty percent?
Okay, well, see, they've got this setup, right? They got this uh twenty-five percent, thirty-seven percent, fifty percent left.
Click payouts. Click payouts, it'll show the whole, basically it's set up on a two-hundred-player tournament, top thirty get paid.
Right.
Okay, okay.
So like, just doing the math.
That's near the bubble.
So if thirty gets paid, this is somewhere around sixty, seventy players left?
This is fifteen percent of the field gets paid.
So thirty percent, thirty-seven percent, we probably around seventy players left.
That seems about right, Joey, that's reasonable math.
So like near the bubble would be like ten players to the money, fifteen players to the money.
They do seventeen and a half percent, so I think um.
Just, it just, I would just call it like soft money bubble.
Oh, that's okay.
I was wondering what that was, now I get it.
What is he trying to say? No.
Did they throw you a party, Louis?
I don't know.
Okay, good.
Thanks, thanks for answering the question, that's why I was wondering, I always was curious about that. I don't know why they don't just put the percentage there.
Percent, yeah, like how near is near, right?
Right, exactly, that's what I was trying to figure out.
I guess the thing is like, are you playing a different range, two people from the money bubble, or four people from the money bubble?
Well, probably like different range, twenty people from the money bubble though, right?
Right, right. Right, yeah, yeah, yes, so twenty-five percent of the field would be pretty comparable to that.
Yeah, they have twenty percent, twenty-five percent of the field would be like um forty left, thirty get paid.
Yeah, so when you're playing these fields at two hundred, that's totally different than when you're playing two thousand.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and a two thousand field, if you're twenty off, that's probably quote-unquote near bubble already.
That's pretty close.
Yeah, 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 it's not, it's not based on how many players are left, it's based on what percentage of players are left.
We doing squeezes again, it looks like?
Uh, yeah, but this time thirty-seven percent ICM.
Okay.
Okay, so let's look at this one, this ace two is off, I'm, I'm folding this, but what's our worst ace X that we're calling, like?
Ace ten.
Yeah, probably something like ace ten, yeah.
Ace ten off?
Maybe ace nine, maybe ace nine, so.
Not ace ten. Maybe ace.
I like ace ten.
Yeah.
I think it's.
He's considered ace jack off.
I'm ace ten, but I could buy ace jack.
I think the student ones. Calling because they're like.
Any suited.
They have good implied odds. Yep.
Bam.
All the suited aces is V-bip, and ace ten off, like you guys were saying.
Yeah.
All suited kings V-bip, you guys, um, you guys getting in there with king two suited?
Yeah, baby.
Every time?
Uh, honestly, my default is just to play any suited card, so. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm probably getting in there too much.
If the players are bad, does that make a difference? Like if it's too fish, that raise and call?
Yeah, definitely, you're just gonna have more equity at every level of the game tree, they're gonna let you realize better, they're gonna be more bluffable, they're.
Yeah, but it's still gonna be hard to realize out of position at two players, right? Like it's.
I mean, if we have like.
Still got over flushed.
You're going to have to just have a good probe game and donking game, like you just, the answer is, if you're comfortable playing out of position, yes.
Hello?
Yes, hello, this is Chris calling with D squad, the best bow, looking for a call.
Speaking, hi Chris, you can call me Kelly.
Hi Kelly.
He's Gary, I tell you what, man, that Kelly's got a voice for radio.
Sometimes I like to overfold versus weak players too, like if I'm against a player I know that I've been watching and they just see bet like every single flop half pot, and I'm gonna be out of position multi-way, like speculative hands, I just don't even wanna see a flop with, because I know it's gonna be that much harder. Like they're gonna bet every flop even if they're supposed to check, so it's gonna be harder to even get to turns.
I like that, especially if they use too big a size frequently.
Half pot, like.
Yeah.
Open C bet half pot every single flop, like it's, it's harder to, it's harder to play shit hands, because you're just gonna fold so much.
Uh, this is an easy call, right?
I guess so, but then also like some of those same players, if they um, if they don't defend, it's like, it's pretty disastrous for them to like C bet fifty percent and then fold to a smallish check raise, which you see some players doing.
Well.
Then you got more money out of them than you should have.
We have to bluff a lot less if it's multi-way, our bluffing, our check raise goes way down.
Right, yeah.
So when the small blind calls, we still got all of the suited hands in.
Yeah.
Cause we're in position to one player.
Okay.
Also shorter here, we were, or no?
Yeah, in twenty, in twenty, it's not tall, yeah.
Feels like.
This is nasty.
God, it feels like it's close to a jam, maybe?
I don't know, no, I don't know.
Thirty-seven from the money.
I think we can call.
Cause we have like a low average stack, we're not.
So like, as risk premium. Am I talking? Oh, I am, yeah, that was me. As, one thing, as risk premium goes up, the, the overcalling range like evaporates, so your calls are gonna get slotted into raises, and I don't know, man, this hand kinda feels bad, but I, I think it's jamming personally.
Do you call on the button with this?
You might some, man, but honestly, like as risk premium goes up, like thirty-seven percent of the field, like you're just gonna start calling less and less and less.
I think I would go on the button full cutoff.
I feel like it's jamming up to like jacks, pretty easy, maybe like queens plus or three betting small, or maybe only like aces and kings are finding a tiny three bet here.
Quick question, is that a fold?
I'm folding, maybe, I don't know, man, it's.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's a high UV jam, but I think it's.
I. It could be, it could be, I, I could, I could see, I could see it folding too.
I think in practice, you're just gonna get wrecked jamming here.
Yeah, what do you wanna do, Rams?
Uh, I would just uh fold, I think you're just gonna get wrecked too often.
Yeah, folding seems good, right? Yeah.
Yeah, what do you, on the button, that's a gigan call.
Hey, you should, you should look at the uh, you should look at the calling ranges, just to kind of fact-check what I was saying.
I think theoretically, this is definitely making money, like theoretically.
So check it out, like the, yeah, the call is evaporated, so like, I don't know, you can't really shift the uh risk premium up, can you? Yeah, because they're asymmetrical, but yeah, as you see less and less risk premium, you'll see more and more calls, now if you switch it to the button, there's a little more, but it's still, it's just not really.
Yeah, it's not existing on most.
It's the hand, it's like the pair under the, the worst pair you jam can do a little calling.
Yeah, it feels bad, man.
I'm just like not implementing this aggressive of like a, you know, no flat calling multi-way in game, like, I mean.
You should.
I know, I know, I, I've been moving this way bit by bit, but like, this is a lot more aggressive than.
I played this.
Certainly than the players I'm playing against, and then, than I usually play.
It's also a little misleading though, Tim, cause it's also like, you're approaching a deeper stage of the tournament, like a lot of your tournaments aren't played in this scenario, so it, it is kinda specific, you know?
And it's assuming a hijack range that's like good, whereas in practice, the, that like midfield caller is often calling with just like two suited cards or something ridiculous, like queen six suited.
I would also say you're not getting punished uh for your flattening appropriately, so.
Right.
I, I think flattening is probably more of an attractive option.
Yeah, cause like small blind behind us should just be blasting off with a king jack suited.
Yeah, yeah, they should.
They just flat, and then we all get to see the four ways.
Now, the, the one caveat to that is, like, you need to be able to fold, you're probably gonna be put in situations where you have to overfold post-flop some, like, you, you don't wanna stack off with a uh, you know, like a junky ace or something, on a, on like an ace high flop.
Thing is, in this sport, we're not even getting that good odds to set mine, if you wanna like exploit it, it'd be cool, like we're putting a ten-four stack in.
We're not exactly set mining, there's some good flops for us.
I think you guys said something pretty interesting about like people not squeezing behind, so I think we could call a little bit wider if we don't expect to be squeezed behind. Cause it does have a set value and also the fact that like, if they're gonna, like a lot of guys out of position, just check fold or check when they miss their two over cards, so.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree with that.
So we play this like um off-suit connected stuff generally.
I think alright.
I would call.
Yeah, I think like all the, and then some of the higher off-suit gappers get in there.
So I think what we're saying here is we should be squeezing more than we are.
Well, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, you should be.
Definitely. Man, run your poker tracker and just um, you know, do, you know, um, the graph of when you're squeezing, and like mine is just a rocket ship going to the moon, right? Like, that's where you make all your money.
This is a, this is a jam, I think, well, actually, is it a jam? Hmm.
Thirty-seven percent, I think you're rip it.
I think, I mean, we're, I think we're jamming up at least a bit wider than this.
No, this is either the bottom or a fold.
I'm kinda with Danny, I think it's, ace jack is a really interesting question, to be honest.
Yeah, ace jack I fold, I'm, I'm, I'm down with this.
Yeah, hijack, I mean, hijack just has like a bunch of, like, uh, suited.
This is probably.
Hands, he has like mid pairs, he has like ace jack off, ace ten off, he has stuff like king jack suited, king ten suited, like he's just, most of his jamming range, I mean, really all the jamming ranges behind us, he's not jamming.
So worst pair, sevens, eights?
I think this is too strong to fold, but like, it's very, just like, just like being said, it's very, very bottom. This bot, buttons calling range seems so strong, but.
Yes and no, I think in practice, yes, but I think in the, the theory range is like, you know, good, it's like, it's a couple pips better than the hijack's jamming range, but it's still not, it's not just like.
So what's the worst of buttons calling, like ace ten suited, you think?
Yeah, yeah, I would do something like that.
We might be in there with ace jacks, um.
To be honest, I think it's probably worse than that, cause like.
It's wider, it's wider for sure.
I thought about ace eight for him.
Yeah, ace eight seems reasonable, Louis, like, okay, so first, like construct the hijack range, the hijack should be jamming like ten-nine suited, like some su- suited nines, some suited tens.
Yep.
Blocker hands, most pairs, all that stuff's in there, so like.
Aces and low suited aces.
Yep, so the button should be calling strong suited Broadway, probably down to like ace ten off, maybe, something crazy like that, maybe ace.
I think, I think if you're the button, look, you've got a sixteen and a half and a twenty-eight big blind behind you, you've got forty-eight. I think you're either isolating or trapping here, I don't think there's any calling range for the button here at all.
I think.
I could.
It's your call.
And his.
Well, for sure.
One at a time.
His flattening range will be kind of polarized, he'll have really strong like kings plus type hands and.
Yeah, slow down.
Yeah, no, Tim, Tim's expressing it pretty good, I think, like, he's gonna have very strong hands in here and like weak hands that are gonna struggle versus like if the big blind jams, he's gonna have hands here that are gonna struggle to continue, but he's also gonna have the very top of his range.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
But he's not gonna.
I think he's calling his whole range that he continues.
Yes, maybe.
The. Don't.
I don't think it is, I think it splits.
Oh, he's checked suited there. He has like a condensed jamming range and a. Polarized dip.
Right, so look, look at, look at the range, okay, so it's the very top, it's the very top, and then it's like hands, the weaker hands. And then he's protecting the jams with ace king suited, so he can like isolate with king jack also.
The majority is calling, but it's.
I, I don't have.
Hey, hey, yeah, yeah, you and your qualifiers.
Wow, you guys are fired.
It doesn't tell us what we uh, got against.
He folded for five more, is that what that's, is that what just happened?
Huh?
No, I don't think so.
No.
Never folding.
Definitely folding if we're off here, it's not a close decision.
No, never folding there.
Twenty-five gallons.
Huh?
Twenty-five gallons.
Gallons, not, not gallon.
I thought he was talking to me, I was like, twenty-five gallon, what?
Oh, can you guys, I'm talking about my fish tank, you guys heard that?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
It was funny, cause you were just like very deep, you're twenty-five gallon.
Cheat to win, god damn it.
We got, we got one, it's more than enough.
Uh, get rid of Jackie. I want a real hand to play here.
I don't know, man, why is it thinking it's close? Are we playing Jack nine? Never? Are we playing Jack?
I don't know, I don't know, these decisions weren't as close as I thought they would be.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this is, the call is minus point four big blinds.
But it's a five, right, what do you call a five big blind, yeah, right.
Like real hands.
Thing is broken, let's restart. Oh my god, I.
You're a little quiet today, Louis.
Uh, that's because I don't have my setup right now.
Um.
Every time someone speaks, it's just like I get distortion on my end. Oh, very close decision. Oh, 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 that, that, that. I'm in.
Pivot.
You're.
We're never gonna get it through, let's go.
And we're getting it through every time.
Wow.
What?
No, that's a thing, man, this is like.
I thought we studied the heck out of these spots the other day.
Alright, so, let me ask a question, what do you think the hijack's calling off fourteen here?
Right, that's the problem, I guess.
Aces and ace nine.
I think this was a chip BB shove, we have the likes of Jacks and the tens.
No, it's, no, no, no.
Right, so this is like, first off, it's like a vapor range, it's kind of a weird range, but um, it's aces.
I said aces and ace nine, it was aces.
Yeah, well, here, it's uh, it's very hard to use it in game, cause uh, cause the hijack jams much more than, than in game.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, that's kind of why it's like I guess the devil's in the detail with that kinda stuff.
The problem is the solver knows the whole range there.
Just assume it's aces.
If hijack is your typical fish, then uh, flattening pocket fours there, whatever, then, then this is printing as a jam, I think.
Well, it's gonna scam me here. Okay, what did we say we're doing here, just call?
Oh, this is a challenge.
This is different, this is different, alright, so this is, this, this is thirty-four and thirty-seven flattening. So I would be more likely to jam something like this than the previous scenario.
My thing with big blind though is like.
Your incentive, if there's conflicting factors, right, you're incentivized to just realize equity. But um.
And maybe jam something slightly worse?
I think it's gonna jam this, to be honest.
ICM likes the suited kings.
Honestly, it's a dirty call here.
I think when we're deep, oh, if it would be deeper stacked, it likes call more, but uh, in twenty, in twenty BBs, it's jamming more.
It's just your suited broadways, like the, the weaker suited broadways.
Alright, alright, that's better, that's a better territory.
King, queens, the outlier. Ace jack suited.
It's like the stuff with.
This is a good bluff, I think you could squeeze this. Do you? Do you squeeze small though?
I would just call.
Yeah, I like going like six here.
Hmm.
I don't think you, like.
It's caller six.
I like six, I think.
It's gonna mix, right? Oh.
Okay, so never call. Yeah, I had it wrong.
Yeah, that's the, that's the thing.
Three bet or fold?
The better wheels are calling a little.
Yeah, you got, you got some calls in here, it's just this, this combo specifically, wasn't.
I'm afraid if I make it six, it's just going call, call behind me.
It's monsters under the bed.
Yeah, you assume too much.
Yeah, honestly, I'm amazed at how much, how many folds I get to these tiny three bets, um, I'm always amazed.
It's because it's the only, the nuts, Tim.
Exactly, yeah, people, people just still think you have aces, and it's like, cool, I have aces.
Hmm, I think this is like cool, but it might be a fold.
Let's start trying it.
I like a squeeze.
Tiny little three bet and see what happens.
I don't like a squeeze.
Yeah, but it's tiny little three bets in later in the game, because of.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause like, I mean, you see your opponents doing this, and they literally have jacks plus, right?
I'm not assuming they'll call, I'm afraid they'll call.
Yeah, but the thing is, you're in position, why are you afraid of them calling?
Yeah. Yeah, that's fair, you still get to, you still get to, to run your, to run your.
I don't like playing multi-way.
Jams, like they miss them all, like ace queen and jam.
What about something, I say call.
I'm squeezing.
Yeah, I like.
I think it's cold.
No, all it's way too much.
Yeah, it's too much.
Yeah, cool.
Here, it's gonna be like ace queen off, and fifty's rough.
So, this is a very uh, interesting.
Yeah, I was trolling.
You have a jack or against TP, so it's for sure, it's not gonna.
Yeah, we need a K.
I think it's the queen, that's the, actually the one that they didn't like, the jack seems to be okay, like king jack's fine, ace jack's fine, but queen.
Yeah, you've been saying that, man, and every time it's like, seems to be true, right?
The queen, the queen is just like, not good at all.
But why is queen so bad?
The jack together, you don't.
So guys, why, why is queen so bad here?
Well, I'll think about it, Romano, yeah, so like, under the gun two, there, the, the hands that they're folding contain a queen, the other guy who flats, the hands that they're folding contains a queen, like their flattening range is like pretty heavy queen X, so when you're blocking.
No, it's not, look.
Anyways, when you're blocking the queen, you're going to um, be pushing them into value portions of their range, is, is what uh, I think's going on there.
Really blocking the bottoms. The bottom of the top of the range.
It actually makes sense, uh, even like much more in game, cause like if people tighten much more up, then, then the queen becomes much bigger bottom than it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That is, that is true, Romano, you're just gonna be even more smoked.
Interesting to have this uh, this deep stack spot, um, we're definitely calling this one.
Yeah, I like call here.
I would squeeze ace five, ace four?
Offsuit. Actually, you can squeeze the suit.
No, not at sixty-three ways, I think we.
You would lean suited, I think, when you're this deep, you might have like vapors of offsuit stuff, but I think that fades out.
Like jack ten, queen nine, king eight, that's like what I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about.
Right, well, look, ace five, ace five off is still in there, so.
Yeah, queen nine, king seven, that's kind of like the line I was thinking of.
The lay with special, queen six suited is in there.
A little bit of suited connectors.
Man, that's just the nuts.
Are we folding?
Yes.
Are we calling to try to scan?
Man, he has like forty versus forty.
I'm going to say it is seventy percent fold, thirty percent call.
Okay, sounds good.
Oh.
Very close.
Well then.
Yeah, I like folding.
I would call there, I think.
Yeah, I was thinking this might be a fold, it's, it's.
Oh yeah, you guys fold here?
Yeah, that sucks.
Yeah. Ace queen off's an easy fold.
This is um, this is kinda tough, I think, like that hijack range should be pretty strong.
And it feels like it should be in there, but it's just not.
Losing.
Hey Louis.
It's interesting. It's interesting that uh, ace queen is uh, just like in the old days, one of the hands that people punt off money so much.
Can you show hijack range, is he calling his whole continue range in that one?
Um, do you think?
No, he shouldn't be, he should, he should split.
So it's very heavy with like aces and kings and then nines and eights.
That's the thing, he just getting. It's rough.
Ace jack is barely making money.
Oh, get, get wrecked.
Here we got scammed with kings.
Six, five.
Oh, oh.
Are, are aces?
Yeah.
Gonna just, are, are we gonna gay on it?
I don't know, I don't know if you, I don't know if you can call like multi-way, like at a position.
Uh, I think it's gonna free bet small.
Well, I think, I think it'll go six, five also, you know what, this is, this is weird, like, it might call. Because look how, look how shallow they are.
Yeah, but big blind, you don't wanna let him big blind for one more chip.
Mixing, so it doesn't think it's viable.
Wow. I, I don't think I've ever seen this in a range before, where it's actually calling multi-way aces at a position.
Look, it's even jamming with aces. And jamming more.
Jamming seems bad.
I messed this up yesterday.
I think under the gun once, never folded.
If you're big blind versus button, you three bet aces all the way down till like eleven bigs effective, you only start trapping when you're really short.
This is a fold.
Or three?
You know, I would be pretty tempted to flick in a call here.
They're such a fish.
I know, I am.
Uh, that's.
We're out of position, gay.
That's folding.
Folded with a sliver of six, five.
You got like a nine or an eight, and you're against late position, you block the bottom, so it's.
Like, the, the thing is also that in cheap BB also, it's also like really, really, really.
Look at all, look at. Look at all, look at all of you guys. Look at all of you.
Look at you.
Look at all of you.
Oh, your ten nine was in there as well.
Click call and watch big blind pile.
Monsters under the bed, Danny.
Let it happen. It's okay.
Uh, this doesn't seem good.
I like the fold.
Oh.
I don't, I don't know, man. I don't know if you can fold this. I would probably call.
No, no, not this hand. I was talking about the nine.
Yeah, ace seven two is like a low EV call, yeah. It's a.
Oh, we're deep.
Interesting.
All days seven from low jack.
What is this, the table full of chip leaders? What the hell?
Honestly, this feels like a fold. Well, I don't know, dude, we are way, this is.
This feels like a call.
No, no, no. I think it's gonna free bet some.
I like folding, I think. Three better folds.
Guys, it's like sixty deep.
As one skips and BP's with like a seventy-six, a stoos. Yeah.
Wow. Wow, it does like calling.
I wanna get in there more with like ace eight plus and maybe like ace five, ace four or something like that.
But you, you are right, Ramona. We are like seventy deep or whatever.
I want ace ten suited here. Yeah, I don't even want ace nine.
Look, look at ace nine, ace eight, like it's just bad news bears.
Windjack suited.
But why does it, why does it assume it to be so bad?
Are we, are we mixing a lot of ace queens in?
It, it, it's a computer program, Ramona, it doesn't assume. It just runs the simulation.
Oh, it assumes the ranges, you know?
Well, right, but this range gets to exploit that range, and then that range gets to exploit this range until they're balancing against each other.
Can you show the UTG one, uh, calling? How it is, uh?
That's the thing, it's just good cards. He has like ace queen suited a lot. He has king queen suited a lot. He has queens and jacks and tens a lot, like. Slivers of stuff that's worth than that. But like, if you're up against reins, it's just like queens and jacks a lot, like. You don't have a lot of juice to squeeze.
Hmm, I kind of wanna squeeze here.
Yeah, ship, ship a ten.
Ship it.
Jamming feels good. I was.
That last part.
You put all your chips in the middle, you don't, you click to the next table, you don't worry about what, who calls, who folds, what the board is. Come back, you either busted or you've doubled up and it's great.
I do that sometimes.
Yeah. Just don't even look.
The high, the high stress spots, I'll actually shut down the table sometimes and open it back up.
Yeah, that's on my computer.
Just do a hard reset.
Just reboot.
Uh, I kind of wanna just fold here.
What about the major?
Ace, ace, oh, it's under the gun to cut off. That cutoff has only got nineteen. I think I'm just folding ace jack two.
Yeah, that's.
This may squeeze a little.
There's not really a good option.
No, I think.
When we saw this before, I think some of it was chippy B ranges, but it was more like cutoff buttons. Gets in there and like, we UTG two or low jack is just too early.
Okay.
Yeah, but like, cutoff raise button call, then maybe a turn off could.
Okay, and ace five is a little bit tense.
Solver is teaching us to be in it.
Pocket eight.
Exactly. The solver's teaching you how to not lose money.
But then also there's some aggressive lines in here that I think we don't go for, like, a lot of the like suited broadways, if you're trouble finding, right?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Oh, boy. I'm squeezing here.
Oh, no.
Seven.
I mean, okay, yeah.
Think it's too deep.
Yeah.
I think it's perfect. Forty, like thirty-five, forty effective, I think it's pretty ideal for the offsuit trashy stuff.
Oh, we got thirty-four. I got you.
Yeah, I was leaning call, but, yeah.
Yeah, one thing I've noticed that when you're very deep, okay, and then there's like a bunch of very deep players, and then you're on the big line, then. Offsuit, these low offsuit aces, they appear.
And like king six off, right, or something?
Hmm, I wouldn't, but I would with the.
Why do you think those appear, Louis?
I, I just know that it appears only from the big line and only when it's very deep and only at ICF.
They, they do. They appear, they appear in shorter stacked depths also, like not just very deep.
Really?
But why, why do you think they're there, though?
This, you do, you do this at plenty big lines?
It's hard to realize your equity post flop multi-way. You have a blocker, you can make a better ace fold.
Yep. And you have an easy fold. It's like fits well in a polarized range where you have an easy fold aggression.
So, the other thing is like, I was thinking, like, you, you have that push and pull between realizing equity and, and finding like enough bluffs, so like. Three betting ace five suited is not necessarily as good when you have the call option, so it starts pulling from some of these offsuit ones to, um, fill in those bluffs. And also like when you're get, when you get jammed on like at forty big blinds, for instance. You're going to, um, just be able to fold. You don't have to worry about torching your equity with ace five off compared to ace five suited or whatever it may be.
I guess you said it, man. It wants to call the suited ones. Right? So, just the offsuit ones, because you're in the big line.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, the other thing is, under the gun is supposed to fold a lot of pretty good aces there when he gets raised by, uh, big blind, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the simple.
Yeah, that's it, Kelly, right? Like, you get plenty of better aces to fold. Like, ace ten is just in the dumps. Right.
I struggle to find bluffs there, so when I see that one, I'm, I'm like, alright, cool, I'm taking it. Call?
This is tricky.
Uh, this is.
We wanna squeeze here.
We're super deep. Um, I would lean call here in game, I think.
I think it's most squeezed and cool.
I think it likes squeezing, it's not calling from the small blind here.
I feel like it's a thing where it has, it squeezes small frequencies of like ace eight down.
Hmm.
Ace eight suited and down, like frequencies of each one, because it's, you know, splitting off.
This is, this is honestly a miserable part of the range to run into at this stage of the tournament, like, it, it's also super weird because it's super deep.
Yeah, we're playing the venom here.
This ICM or a TPV spot?
It is ICM, George.
This is okay. This is a good spot to call because you want the big blind to come in with worse bluffs.
I, I agree. I think this is a call.
I.
Most of the time.
I think it's not calling from small light so much.
Yeah, I think it's.
Cause you want to avoid, you want to avoid playing, playing, uh.
Yeah, I'm on.
Well, I think you play this hand like, like a pair, like, you know, like a small pair. Like, if you flop a big draw here or something, you're in.
You don't like small pair. In this.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, we're not looking to win with an ace or a nine. We're looking to win with a flush.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. And, like, a small pair there, you can flop a set and win a big pot.
Yeah, but do you have, like, you already have a big stack and you're pretty late in this tournament. Do you need to mine with ace nine here? That's.
But what's the harm, right? You can afford it.
If you're disciplined, you gotta throw that ace away.
I mean, sure, it's terrible, but it, but it's, I'm surprised that it was calling so much there.
See, look at all the pairs.
You can cooler king jack of clubs.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And you have a lot of money to win tournament, like, put in one big line and a half. Win a big pot.
And then your chip leader.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, you get to cool way more deep stacks, like it's even.
The problem people, the problem people run into with a hand like that is they won't, you know, they won't fold. Once they, once they catch a nine or a top pair nines or aces or bullshit like that, right?
I've got, I prefer calling any better. I'm calling ace jack.
Here again, this is a, this is a, uh, this is a tough one here. I don't know what I would do here.
I would just call here, I think. I think nines I would jam.
With the stack size, it makes it more difficult, though.
Or even tens, I don't know. Yeah, I call.
Yeah, I think you jam tens, right? Maybe.
For sure. Yeah, maybe some frequency. Nines, I'm unsure.
Yeah.
Uh, full frequency and nines.
Was that Danny?
Yeah, otherwise they would, otherwise they would be just so hard to play.
Right.
There you are.
Would jam this? Small or all in?
I don't think we're gonna get, no, okay, it's mixing.
Five. Yeah.
We click it.
Hmm. That's fine.
So Louis, what you do with such a situation usually? Do you just, uh, prefer jamming there or are you raised?
No, I'm raising fold.
Jamming, I, I, the more and more I look at Sims recently, the more and more I realize just jamming the top of your range, even like twenty big binds multi-way is just inferior.
Especially with ICM. Can we see what we're bluffing for five there?
Also, I feel like.
Like, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be like ace ten suited or something, like it's gonna be something.
Also with kings, the get it in range is probably not gonna change whether you three bet, so, or jam.
Yeah, well, that's part of it, right? Like, you're, you're boxing out EV from parts of the range by jamming that are gonna be. Inelastic, they're gonna be static. They're like doing the same thing if you jam as if you not all in three bet. Yeah, what do you do with ace king suited there? Not all in three bet is gonna be superior. And then jam the ace king offsuit.
Yeah. Cut off.
You can, you can jam an ace king offsuit to protect the jams that you do have. Like, you, you need something strong there, and I think ace king traditionally is a really good combo for that.
Yeah, ten ace ten suited.
So is this it? So is this it? Ace ten, ace king suit is jamming too? Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I'm kind of simplifying this in practice and three betting like aces small.
So the reason I, the reason I asked, final table the other night, I punted, uh, I believe with ace king suited. And, um, it was kind of a weird, it was a weird stack size situation and I raised small and then, um. I don't know, it was just really tough. It was a tough spot. Hmm. I'm, I wasn't sure what to do after the flop.
So Louis is asking, Louis is asking here, what are we doing here?
I, I like three betting this.
I'm folding.
No, I think it's free bet or, uh, like, makes him free bet and cool. I'm not calling because the logic is gonna have, uh.
So, we've got a jack and a ten. We don't have a queen. I kind of think, I kind of think we might three bet this sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this might be it.
Have a call.
Yeah, calling, calling, calling's reasonable. You're folding a lot.
Whenever you're against TP, the jack and the ten, it's still very bad.
This is my sucker hand.
Three bet small, because we're kind of deep.
But it, uh, but it still helps you to have some of the weaker, weaker bluffs from the bottom of your range that, that is, that still has potential.
He goes for twelve big, so of course we're gonna call in position.
You just called.
What is this range? Come on, man.
Whatever it is, let him blast it off.
Yeah, for sure.
Rip it.
Um.
Yeah, he's king.
The weird thing about going five here when we have kings is like, what is UTG two doing with tens? You know, what are they doing with nines? Stuff that might just call a jam, but then you facing five, like.
And.
So weird.
No, with ace king off, you don't wanna play this post flop. It's.
Now, this is a jam, for sure.
Just jam.
The offsuit's definitely gonna jam. Even the suited could jam here.
I think the suited mainly jams, yeah.
I think with the nines and tens in game, like, people just get married to their hands and they just.
Oh, yeah.
They're not gonna like be so focused to be like, oh, he has aces and kings, let me fold.
They might find a call, though, right? Rather than four bet?
Well, that's the thing. Like, I think people have gotten, like, the, the baseline knowledge of like what to do versus jam is. I don't wanna say common knowledge, but people are gonna be better at that than playing these, uh, these low SPR spots post flop with middling hands, like, they're gonna make mistakes.
Is this final table? That's fair. Question?
No.
Thirty-seven percent.
And I guess when you have the ace ten suited portion of your range, you can avoid a flip and maybe bully them post a little.
I'm seeing a lot of, I'm seeing a lot of the Brazilians now, they're making a play where when you raise under the gun, and they've got like a smallish type pair, like fives and sixes, they're doing the dunk, uh, three bet. To feel you out, to see if you'll four bet all in, then they fold. If you, if you don't, then they play it like they've got aces. Have you seen, have you guys been seeing that play?
Little clicker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, what do you guys do here?
Fold. Oh, yeah.
Alright, so having, having a queens, having a queens not good, as we've kind of gone over, I see.
We are short, though.
I think I'm calling here. I think I'm calling here.
No, they're short and they're, they're min raising and flatting small blind, like, oof.
Is this, is this ICM? Yeah, it's thirty-seven percent.
Oh, okay. I'm calling.
I think queen jack might be the bottom. The small blind range is too strong.
Calling, pure call. This, the, the, we're so short, I think you have to call here.
Yeah, for a little deeper, then it changes.
You gotta realize your point zero one bigs.
Oh, if it's twenty-five percent, I think we're folding as well. I was doing some work with that the other day. Although maybe we're still too short. Yeah, I think I would call this one.
I don't like calling this deep.
Me neither.
I'm folding, I think, three betting some, maybe?
I think it's pure call.
Barely good enough.
Yeah, as you said, man, we're too deep. We have to be respectful.
Hmm. Fold ace eight? Fold ace seven?
Their ace five off was starting to raise some there, too.
The magic offsuit ace squeeze.
Easy fold against big blinds.
What's your, what's like, what's your worst call here? Like, do you call like king queen suited?
Oh, boy.
Probably, maybe.
I don't. I don't. I think I fold king queen suited here.
I think king queen suited, but like, that matters, like.
How about ace queen off?
Nah, I think it's a fold.
Dust, just dust.
I think ace queen off has to play here, no?
Yeah.
How about ten? How about tens?
Easy play.
You have to go.
Tens are called.
It's ace, but it's, it's eight big lines, so it, it might actually be a bit wider, but, yeah.
It's half your stack, though.
Yeah, but the thing is, you, you also need the stack to get, uh, to get the good money, you know?
You guys aren't considering calling this, are you?
No, 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 we're.
No, we're saying where bottom.
We're debating king queen suited and pocket tens.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they. Pocket tens is a call.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a theory call here.
But king ten, it's probably.
Ooh, okay, okay.
Oh, pocket ten's just getting in there. Ace queen's gone.
What's the EV for ace queen suited?
I don't think I would, I think I would have been in there with ace queen suited, I have to be honest.
Yeah, I probably maybe even call with ace queen off here, because it's like eight big lines still. It's not ten, it's eight.
What's, yeah. Oh.
Well, yeah, we see more and more it, on ICM spot, I think a queen is really bad.
And multi-way, you just, you have to beat two ranges.
Down, yeah. Multi-way ICM, ooh.
This might be a jam. No, no jam. It's close, though.
Hope they're called.
Seven, sevens is jamming, I guess.
I'll get nine.
Yeah, sevens.
Right. Alright, we with sevens. Two, two. Hmm.
You could maybe squeeze here. He bet.
I would just. George, you're doing it pure chippy between bet. This is savagery.
Yeah, this is a bold, I think.
Yeah, that's falling. No way calling.
King jack off. Oh, look at this.
Okay. Hmm.
George is just one bit.
I'm not raising with queen jack, I'll tell you that.
Okay, it's a little better to over squeeze than under squeeze.
Okay, it's a little better to over squeeze than under squeeze.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Six. Okay, so this one is amazing.
This is easy call.
What do we do with ace queen suited? Jesus.
Oh, surely that's not, that's in there now.
Yeah.
In there, tell me, I don't have to fold ace queen suited here.
Yeah.
I think ace queen suited folds.
No, I think, I think.
Not for six.
Okay, yeah, no. Oh, actually, I I I watched the stacks wrong. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, positions are later, it's six big blinds instead of eight, so.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, yeah.
There with ace queen suited. How about ace queen offsuit?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in there with ace queen offsuit.
Pocket. Yay or nay?
So ace jack suited here is always a fold, like an easy max? Ace jack suited here? Is that what?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
I wouldn't be surprised if ace queen suited.
No, 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 no.
What are we doing here?
But that, but this king jack, it doesn't have so much equity, I think, that's.
Oh, I'm folding king jack here.
Park, what do you do with pocket eights?
But it's.
Good question.
I think eights might be a fold.
I don't think he's flating worse than pocket tens.
No, I think eights can call.
And the cutoff, so like eights now.
It's six big lines.
You think he's flat in pocket seven, sixes, fives, like either.
No, I think five, six get to get, get bad, but eight, I think.
Well, I mean, if the cutoff isn't flat in pocket seven, sixes, five, eight can't be good, right?
Ba boom.
See, I was pretty right in this one.
I gotta see the cutoff range.
Yeah, tell me what he's.
He is flating those hands, Ken. He's going down to fives, I think.
Five.
Wow.
Alright, so.
Not flating much.
That's why.
The net projects his knit onto others.
Like, my perception of the cutoff range is much tighter than reality.
I couldn't believe ace jack suited was a fold here. I'm happy to see.
You were right.
Alright. Is he fold?
Win.
Um, just wanna see.
No.
Yeah, this is bottom of the win.
It mixes, right?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we looked at this, it's sevens plus.
I would call in game.
It's mixing, no.
No, no, Lewis said we could jam.
Yeah.
It's a mate.
But he's still calling the most here.
Yeah, but he just wanted to jam because he likes to jam.
Seven was.
So the seventh jam more than nines, because nines block the bottom of his range, right?
I think they played.
Jam more anyway.
Think both plays, sevens and nines, ah, see?
Oh, doesn't matter, it's linear.
Yeah, let's say it's a nines, we just call with Lopez. Oh, we got the ace four suited, that's the ultimate combo. We gotta squeeze here. No, that's right. So Ken, remember when?
Big blind, we call.
We're big blind, we're gonna call, and if we had ace four off, we would squeeze.
Yeah.
A little bit. His five off, a seven off.
Yeah.
I'll just ace four in this one.
It's it's spot on, but we got lucky.
I don't know how it decides which offsuit ace to squeeze there.
Oh, I think if you get one of them, you're pretty. So this is an easy fold, what are we doing here? So what about like uh? Jack ten suited here?
I think it's a fold.
What about queen jack suited there?
I think that's a fold too.
Queen duck.
Let's see.
Pretty much three better fold, right? Yeah. Yeah, look at that, queen jack suited.
Oh, this is freaking crazy.
This is sick. This is sickening.
Need to, need to become on it.
These are my favorite hands. This is not fair.
Look at this, Kelly, you've been doing it for a little.
I've been stopped, I've stopped it, I've stopped it. That's why I'm doing better now. I have to be honest with you.
Uh huh, alright.
I've, I've plugged the leak. I'm plugging the leak, it's hard though.
But this is assuming the players are good. What if they're like fish and they're gonna, uh, you know, like just torch one?
They might open even more tighter ranges, so.
Well, if they're fish and they're older folding, then you should be raising tons of hands.
Yeah, it really depends on what kind of.
If they're fish and they're over calling, then you should be folding tons.
Yeah, depending, depends what, what their mistakes are, don't it? There's no like one answer.
The term of fish is kind of like relative. It doesn't describe a player at all.
Right, is it a blue whale or is it a, you know, a little walleye?
It's not a shark, that's who we know.
Twenty five gallon or fifty five gallon?
Um, is it fold? What are we doing here?
Wait, the sky opened off ten.
I'm gonna call. We can call.
I'm folding here.
I think a nine is bad.
Are we all in ever?
Could we jam here?
Yeah.
No, ace nine. I don't want to be, because look at the big small blind, like we only barely cover here.
You're twenty five effective, jamming's not gonna be great.
I think he just fold.
See, see, Kelly, I'm sometimes right.
I'm thrilled.
How much EV did we lose there by folding?
See, it's jamming pure.
Yeah. Sure is.
Not that much, right? But still a little bit.
Is tha- is that because like his raises on ten blinds is aces or some bullshit and because you have an ace, he doesn't have that? Why are we?
I think it's more to do with the flating range, to be honest.
It could be aces, kings.
I think it's like both, I I would say, I would say it's like both, where we think about first, uh, what the cutoff opens. And then how it interacts with the small blind, it's flating there too, and it's just too strong with this stack interaction, I think. And the blocking, of course, too, yeah.
Do you wanna squeeze here as well?
No. Because it's much different now.
Do I wanna call?
I think fold. I don't like ace nine.
Like, this is so tough. Why is it so tough?
I think it's a cool.
It's great. It's uh.
I game, I probably call, but now this thing's got me confused.
Yeah, that's call. Oh my.
Yeah, that's, it's a razor fold type hand, isn't it?
Just the hand to go, it wants to go all in, and now it's folding.
Yeah, there's so many variables that change what you wanna do, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
The stacks are.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why I love this. It's like such a good exercise.
Yeah, we're folding for sure, one hundred percent.
Okay, so what do you squeeze here? What do you do with? Queen suited.
How about king, how about king ten suited?
King queen suited, I think, is a jam. King ten suited, I would jam.
Jack ten suited.
We s- we squeeze with kings, aces, and some. And some block of blows.
Jamming.
Queen jack suited.
Call?
Well, we've seen it's not a, it's been a.
I think queen jack suited.
It's ace five suited.
Queen jack suited jams, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, because it's late position.
Now we got the Broadway jams, okay. Suited Broadway jams, yeah. Okay, this is what I'm more used to.
And what was like ace ten suited, ace jack suited, what were they doing there?
Ah, sorry.
Big D, I think I'm squeezing.
More than suited tens.
Okay.
Remember Daniel Negron, you said that in a perfect world of paradise poker, you get to call with jack ten suited no matter what.
Like clicks it, that's so annoying. I'd rather beg her so I can fold easier.
An easy fold there, no?
I know, but like he just clicks it.
I'm taking notes, Ken.
Uh, fold?
Yeah.
That would make ten shove in a game.
Ace jack off? All in, ace jack off?
No.
No, for real?
Yes.
Ace jack, ace jack off.
No, ace jack off might squeeze. Small, yeah.
Six big ones.
So is jamming huge?
Uh, could be, um, because.
Yeah, it is.
Good job, Louis.
Well, yeah, it did in the last example, but it was small blind instead of cut off.
I honestly.
The ranges are pretty similar, to be honest.
I honestly don't have a three, but not all in here.
It's like too good to not play, but too not good enough to jam.
That's a mistake again. The small free bets is always aces, kings, and like some ace X blockers, usually offsuit, but sometimes suited.
Okay, I wanna squeeze here.
Yeah, because if you rip ace jack and get called, you're like feeling like you're never good.
I think we're folding here.
Terrible squeeze, huh?
It's off, off the compass suck.
Too late position, we're deep, we got two broadways, what are we waiting for?
King, king, queen.
Well, it's, it's point six, it's point six EV though.
Well, Louis, like, think about it, okay? You are sixty five effective, like, the offsuit is just gonna get nuked when you're this deep squeezing.
That's right.
But but king queen off squeezes quite a bit in ICM.
What if we're button here? Do we ever get king jack on the button?
King jack does not seem like a good squeeze, like you could probably simplify your game and just say, don't do that deep.
Don't do it.
Yeah.
It's always king queen.
Yeah, so it's the offsuit aces, uh, king queen, and then your suited broadways, almost every single time.
Danny doesn't do that this deep.
Yeah, like, I mean, if you, if you squeeze here and flop a king, like.
I'm happy, doesn't have a, if king would be the best one, pick a jack instead.
Fine, the jack, yeah, jack could get really gross really quickly.
Okay, so fold?
We're deep again.
Alright, what, what are you doing with like, what are you doing with like king nine?
I think nine is a free bet.
So weezy.
King nine can call?
I wouldn't be surprised to see some of these suited kings this deep doing some shenanigans.
This calls.
This calls, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, it doesn't, wow.
Small blind.
His hands, it's not linear enough.
It's like a sliver.
It's not linear enough.
Well, it's thirty seven percent, and you know, and chippy it would call, correct?
Bottom, see, look, it's very linear to range.
Yeah.
We're in the small blind.
Notice king five, king four is like starting to fragment in there.
I mean, that's just for board coverage, no?
No, they're just good polar bluffs.
Well, it's because at this depth, you also start pulling in the suited connectors there. That's why it chooses, instead of having the, like, the offsuit eights or the suited eights that target the. Bottom of the opening range, it coalesces with your suited connectors that call.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Alright. What about this?
Notice it was free bet in the small suited connector sometimes.
Queen jack might be out in that hand.
I'm calling here, and I don't know, I don't know if it's a mistake, but I'm definitely calling here. We're the big one.
It's good.
Yeah, yeah, it it is, it probably isn't a mistake, it's calling pretty reasonably in uh, in this, I think.
What about the jack eight or a jack seven?
Jack seven, no, jack eight, eh, probably calling still.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, jack seven, yeah, eh, indeed.
Yeah, it's calling even more.
Jack, JK, JK is just calling everything because you're deep.
Yeah.
Doesn't care.
So. I guess usually it's like the the chip distribution is like a major factor, but now it's just off the roof.
I think it's a six and a half.
Here, I think you're squeezing, yep, I agree. Yeah.
It'll be good, nines. Same thing with nines.
You gotta move that high jack out of there. The undergun goes all in, that's twenty nine more big blinds.
With, instead of ten, ninety, ten with nines, it's gonna be seventy, thirty or something.
Yeah, Danny's right.
That looks like seventy thirty to me.
No. It's sixty nine thirty one.
Joey, can you say anal retentive?
On the bottom, we really don't do much cool in ICM. We, like, it seems like we cool as much in the small blind as we do on the bottom.
I'm curious with the last example, if the opener wasn't so short, how it would change things.
Yeah.
Changes a lot, it changes lots.
I would call a lot more if he had a.
Absolutely.
Stack, right?
Are you calling with ace king there, Louis?
Yeah. But, uh, look at this, pocket tens.
Wow. Yep.
Did he scam us?
All in.
So it was folding nines there, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's. Or.
We're, we're squeezing nice.
Yeah.
Hold?
Hold.
Wow, such a bit.
He opened off eleven.
This is just.
I guess we fold. Oh, fold again.
It's like, almost like playing cash in short second.
Aha.
I think cool, but this is the bottom. Actually, uh, yeah.
I think fold.
Yeah, I think it's folding.
With the big blind, we're very short, so it's not gonna fold. Having it then is bad against early position. There's two of them, so it's really bad.
I don't know. This is the bottom or ace jack is the bottom, I think.
I think we probably wanna squeeze here.
Louis.
No, we're too shallow.
Like, like eighty percent fold, twenty percent squeeze.
Okay, you would just call, we go all in.
No, no, dude, this, this is gonna be like mixing folds and calls, I think, like, it's gonna be calling, but it's gonna be like, not worth a lot.
I think ace jack, oh, yeah, I mean, ace jack off is like.
I don't think you're getting hurt if you fold here. I don't think you're, yeah. I don't think you're getting hurt.
The uh, UDG one score is just so, so strong.
Yeah.
There is squeezing.
Squeezing, more than calling.
But it's point oh one.
Is there a sixty?
You're not losing much.
I'm surprised how, how much it fold.
I'm surprised how much it squeezed.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
Yeah, me too.
It makes a good bluff to balance here aces, because it's indifferent between calling and squeezing.
This ain't stand off, guys, this is like the nuts, no?
Not multi way, my man, not multi way. It is that, you're right, it is the nuts, like versus one opponent, but two?
Well, actually, we haven't talked about that explicitly, and I just wanted to mention that. So like, when we're squeezing sometimes, sometimes we're gonna jam and they're both gonna call. In order to win the hand against three players, you're not looking to make one pair, you're looking to make, you know, more.
Straights, flushes, best top pairs.
So, it's um, it's, yeah, for all the same reasons that like the offsuit hands disappear in all situations, they also are disappearing here. Because, yeah, you will, you wanna bring a knife or gun to a gunfight.
Yeah, you don't wanna bring a knife, that's right.
And like if, you know, if you start thinking about like a four way situation, a five way situation, like this applies to bomb pots, et cetera, et cetera. You need bigger hands to win, right?
What about this one?
Uh, you already clicked the button, so it's not interesting anymore.
Oh, is it, oh, it works?
It's because they're short, right?
Jamming ace queen off is pretty standard in spots like this.
If they also had thirty, I think raise would be the, the play.
What is that, what is that UTG one, what is that UTG one range? Like, what, what, what is that?
It's, it's one.
That's like five four suited.
Ace jack suited.
Aces.
Get out of here, get out of here, what is that range?
Yeah, ace jack suited and aces.
It's a two point eight combos.
Alright.
Guess what, guess what, we're blocking both of them, so.
I like that quant.
That means there's three of each. That means there's three of each.
There was no ace, hold back.
Feels bad, man.
Yeah. Okay, ninety-two, not fold.
Fold, yeah.
Alright, so what about on the button? Okay, well, you already clicked it, I think it gets kinda close, I think it gets kinda close when you are deeper on the button with these types of hands.
Also folding from the button.
And how about ten nines?
Well, how deep are we also, like, you went kinda quick, I didn't really see like what the effective stacks, thirty-five? So, under the gun.
Had twenty.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, that changes it a little bit, like, I think if you're forty effective, or like even thirty effective, it may be better. But I don't like it at twenty, though.
I'm with you.
What hand did we have?
We had eight, nine suited.
No, it went so quick that I didn't even see.
So from the big line here, it would be a squeeze.
Uh, yeah, not from the small blind, different range composition.
You can squeeze ace five, you can squeeze ace five, ace four suited. Yeah.
The suiteds are gonna prefer from the small blind.
Yeah.
Look at that. We're still squeezing suited now.
Not a thing here.
Cause we're deeper, huh?
No, 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 it's small blind, it's different.
No, he clicked, oh, he clicked a big blind, didn't he?
Oh, did he?
Yeah, when you, when you're fifty big blinds deep from the big blinds, you prefer to free bet with the suited connectors and the real aces, the suited ones.
Really quick, Louis, what if, instead of low jack hijack, what if it's, uh, under the gun low jack? And we're big blind here?
Same thing, no?
It's gonna be same thing, but less, less combos of free bets.
It won't work.
Yeah.
Cool.
King nine, king nine's a bluff it always likes from the big blind versus E P. Cool.
Call.
Yeah.
I like, I like call.
What about? Pocket nines.
Cool.
Call.
I think you're, I think you're too deep, and you're still covered.
Not all in.
It's just calling here.
I would, I would be, I would be calling pretty, I, I think I'm calling nines.
It's, it calls a lot, it calls a lot, then, but.
They're gonna mix jacks, no, it's not mixing jacks.
Tens is where the sliver comes in.
I remember from the crazy sixes, uh. Like.
Everyone is, uh, everyone's just super deep, too.
Yep, tens, you gotta respect E P.
Hmm, yeah.
Fold.
Ace five offsuit, dude, that guy is at life.
Yeah, we like folding.
Yeah.
Yeah, look, we'll do re-jam stacks behind us. This is gonna be a jam, I think, jam, yeah, we got a king.
This is not a jam.
Do we call the offsuit?
No, this is a call.
This is a call.
I think from the big blind, it's a cool, I think from the small blind, it's a jam.
Alright, so how do you think the big blind only having ten big blinds here affects these ranges?
That's a good question.
Feels like not much, because.
Wider, if anything.
We're gonna squeeze to six, right?
No.
No, I don't think this makes a very attractive squeeze, because like, we're not really excited.
Don't wanna raise.
Action against U T G one, yeah, like, you want hyper polarized range for the raise six size.
To be honest, I don't know here, I'm kinda torn, to be honest, I can see merit in basically every option here except for folds.
I have the same problem.
I see more merit than calling jam, no, raising's just not that good, you want like kings and aces versus like ace reg, kind of stuff.
Versus E P, E P, king, queen suited is a good jam.
Yeah, and king jack, it's always those combos, it's always those king, queen, king jack. It's gonna have some like ace jack off in it, in ace.
We'll start skipping some tens here, yeah, we don't use the tens against double E P. That becomes the small.
Double E P, it's always king, queen, king, jack is the boss.
And queen jack here.
Yeah, it's not.
Queen jack's the one I never know what, what it's gonna do.
It depends, I think, I think if it gets more I C M, we start folding the queen jack.
And king, queen O is a fold mainly. Makes sense. Oh.
Hello, that was very interesting.
Call us, please.
Yeah, this is a small free bet.
Either way.
Either way, right?
If the, if it's just a one E P opener, are we doing the same thing with king, queen suited, or is it, does it make a difference if it's a reasonable call?
Yeah, it does make a world of a difference.
If it's a single opener, I think then we'll flat a lot.
Yeah, I agree with Danny.
Okay.
From the small blind, right?
It was this one, right, and then?
Yeah. Same situation, but just a single opener from the small blind.
Fear of tall, look at this. Changes from one way to another.
And if the caller is later positioned, does that change it, like, if the button flatted, and so, well, not the button, say the cutoff flatted instead?
I don't think so.
To cut off.
I think it's, it's jam is more than, no.
It does. Play more, it is. Even the cutoff. Uh, no, hang on.
What, what's the reasoning in that, like, why do they call more versus one opener, don't you have to get through two ranges when you're jamming?
It's easier to win the pot heads up post-flop, right?
Can you repeat that question?
And there's less dead money. Uh, he, he asked why, if there's an extra caller, are we more inclined to jam versus overcall?
Dead money.
Yeah. The solver will protect the calling range by slipping aces in every once in a while. But in real life, the calling range is usually too weak to call any shelves.
So really, we're still just worried mainly about the initial opener, and then there's an extra two big lines out there that we can win if we go all in and they both fold.
Yeah, I mean, initial opening range is, like, I was gonna have top of range in it, where usually the overcall just doesn't have the best hands, right?
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, next step.
Here we are calling.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can call a bunch of, like, offsuit playable hands.
Well, it's late position.
Is there a frequency of squeeze yellow here?
I'm, I'm, I'm squeezing here.
I'm not squeezing with, with this in any universe.
You can squeeze this?
Yeah, squeeze.
Can jam, weird.
That's a call.
A big blind is usually very linear.
And big blind is also like really, re, a lot of, a lot of calling in there, I said.
This is a chance.
Yeah. Should be.
Could be.
Uh, I call here, it might be bad. I call here, too.
Suit the jack.
I think the call's okay. Yes, it's a jam, every day.
Suit the jacks jam, suit the tens are mixing.
Suited kings and suited jacks.
Uh, kings just aren't calling.
Even queens aren't so bad, oh, it's because the other caller is late.
Yeah, he's button. So the later the caller, the wider their range will be, so then we can jam more.
Yeah. Yeah, cause the later, the, the, the flat range is wider, the later the position.
Well, that's pretty good.
Fold it.
Like, I get hurt a lot jamming stuff like that.
I mean, yeah, you're gonna run into it a decent amount of the time.
Yeah.
But then sometimes you're gonna win, you know, seven big blinds.
Yep.
I've been doing it a lot, they just fold a ton.
Yeah, they do just fold a ton, yeah.
Um, this can probably squeeze sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, squeeze.
It's ninety-seven off.
We, we also, we also cover them by a lot, which means we get to squeeze and free bet a lot, because we like double stack them.
We just rip it.
And we got a hundred bigs, like, we can put a lot of pressure on them, lo, look how much, you know, this is a, we're free betting twenty-seven percent of the time.
I'm actually surprised over the rip, but I was like, thinking more of calling.
Yeah, because the I C M pressure is going up, as the I C M pressure goes up, the value of ripping and picking up the dead chips goes up.
I was like, pure thinking call.
But we're pretty deep, effectively, I didn't think there were any rips in there.
Yeah, that's why I, I was with you, Joey.
Yeah.
You're still gonna have.
Only for like, super L P L P configurations, I think, though.
Yeah, it seems like that, yeah.
Thing is, when you cover by this much, like, we got double the small blind stack, we just get to bully a lot.
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually very important, uh, stuff here, the, the fact that we are almost double their stacks.
Hmm. Gives us more leeway. Alright, now we fold.
Now we're probably fold, yeah.
Oh, what?
Because it was a combo that had some jamming, it's kind of indifferent, and so it's gonna be pretty resilient against the format. Because it was already going all in a lot anyways.
Yep, but against the player, we're probably dead with ace nine.
Yeah.
He's like, ah, it's getting toward bubble, this guy's just trying to bully me.
So here, we can, uh, uh, I think it squeezes and it also, it also falls. It can even have a jam there, too, yeah.
These the opposite ones, right?
No.
I don't know against L P L P.
Both, both players cover us, so we're gonna be more respectful here.
That's what I was gonna say, I was gonna say Peter's point, like.
Yeah.
We do. Those, uh, the jamming ranges, yeah, suited tens, basically, the suited stuff and ace queen off, ace jack obviously.
I was so wrong here.
So, because we're the big line, we wanna call with these suited hands and bluff with these, simple as that.
Yeah, the big blind, I, in these I C M things, I haven't seen the big blind going crazy with any suited stuff, really. When they get a call with the suited, they just wanna take it post-flop.
I thought if there was ever a time that was the time.
Yes and no, we were actually, we were going all in with a bunch of suited hands, they're just ones that are a bit worse, like, queen jack, queen ten, queen nine, jack ten, that one, that last one. We're going away with the hands, which we're not dominated when called.
Joey means the suited aces, I guess.
Yeah, the, the implied odds hands, the suited broadways are always gonna get a little risky somewhere.
Look at this spot, this is.
Tens are folding here, tens are folding here, tens are folding.
Oh my god.
The tens are bad against the two E Ps, then.
Galen has aces in the low jack.
True, yeah, that's why it's bad.
Yeah, get scammed.
It's, it's aces and, and skins, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's aces in like one combo of ace nine.
I, I can't fold tens there, that's just.
Well, you can call and see if you flop a set at least, right?
Yeah.
Minus oh four E V, wow.
Gotta squeeze here, no?
Yeah, I squeeze, I squeeze here.
Here, we probably can't jam here, this one, I think.
Plus big blinds against small blind, which is rough.
Jamming fifty big blind seems absolutely plenty at this stage of the tournament.
You jam fifty in this, in this fish.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I didn't saw, I didn't saw, I didn't saw the small blind, sorry.
Yeah, first button, I could get behind it, but fifty-two effective is way too much, I do like raising, I think.
We, we are, yeah, I didn't saw, I didn't saw the small blind, so.
Galen, you saw the past three examples where we had jam ranges here, right?
You, yeah, but you weren't fifty-two effective either.
Yeah, we were one hundred there, we were one hundred there.
Yeah, but you're also, like, you're covering by like two X, you had a hundred and something big blinds, that's a completely, completely. Different situation.
I think it's indifferent between squeeze and jam, personally.
No, the thing is, you jam a lot less, because in that obvious situation, we had the guy covered by like forty big blinds, here we have covered by five big blinds.
Yeah, but in the one after, we were covered.
He's got you covered.
A ton.
One at a time.
We're covered.
Yeah, we're covered, exactly.
I mean, we do have a jamming range here, it's not big, the jamming range, I always think of in these spots, ace queen off, right, that's like. Yeah, ace king off might just go for it. Uh, we've seen it a bunch here.
Click yellow and then we can find out.
Alright.
Almost indifferent.
Too short for us to squeeze, although I didn't know what else to do with this hand. Here, squeeze.
So like.
This is crazy.
Damming ace nine, wow.
It's pulling from the blockers, like, the, these trashy blockers.
Yeah, but it's five percent of it, yeah.
Alan, you shoving ace four off him?
Absolutely not.
I don't think that's necessary.
You know what I am doing with ace four off, is I'm, I'm not all in raising it, is what I'm doing.
Actually, I'm telling you, if you jam here, you get called by the fish with a pair of deuces, and he beats your king, queen.
So true, I think we call still.
This is, I don't, uh, didn't wanna squeeze.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is the bad side of the game tree, there were good sides of the game tree as well that we are not going to see.
So they're the best fold or the worst call here?
Jamming at town on us, I didn't think it was that much, though.
It's a fold, because we're free, we're free betters of luck, so it's a fold.
I mean, last time we did it with ace nine, and I called it off.
More, not for twelve more, you've gotta call for twelve more.
Yeah, I guess we just.
Or, I'm sorry, fourteen, fourteen, uh, sixteen more, excuse me.
Yeah, with call.
Yeah, it's calling off, it's calling off.
It's a theory call, it's a fold for me in practice.
Well, you're getting more two to one here on your money.
This is crazy to me here with.
Well, it could be, it could be a pair of tens and you're flipping, you know, it's a lot of, lot of, under, like, nines, tens, jacks are all gonna do this, right?
So I, I didn't want to, because I didn't wanna face that jam, but it doesn't care, just three bets.
Even getting thirty, even if you're thirty percent here, you're, you're getting the right price, so.
Yeah, Louis, we've been squeezing this guy all day, he's had enough.
Jacks, see, that's why you did.
Ace jack off here, just a call.
I'm free betting, yeah.
Here's the call.
Goodness, Lewis. We're in the.
But it's like to punt.
It's just a call.
It's fine, I have a tight image that don't believe me.
Lewis, your image is like.
Then, you should skip that one and do it with a seven.
Old. Yeah, the Br- the Brazilian low stakes player probably wrote a dossier on me.
Well. Why are you guys so much on their back, they're pretty good, when I make a final table, there's like fifteen of them, and there's five of them.
They're not, they're not saying they're bad, they're just saying that they're aggressive.
Well, Brazilians.
Hmm.
Uh, we could still, here sometimes, fold sometimes.
Always.
Have the bigger vendetta against the Russians.
Brazilians don't hear a call, though.
Are Russians the new Brazilians?
On A C R, the Russians are crazy.
Katie Russians, many sites.
I don't know, the Brazilians are typically pretty, pretty behaved in, on A C R, in my experience. They're just good, if anything. The Russians are out, out here going wild.
That's cause they got, that's cause they got the real time up while they're playing, for god's sake.
I, I do admit the opposite, I like, my, like, modal Russian, like, the Russian I assume is like V P I fourteen, sort of like knit reg, that's like the guy that I'm expecting.
Huh.
Those are Russians I play against, Russians.
What's your A B I, Tim? I'm probably playing lower stakes.
Hmm, somewhere between A B I is probably around thirty, so I play.
Playing lower.
Tens and one hundreds.
Well, I've been four betting, I've been four betting tons against the Russians, and I've been making a lot of chips doing it.
I mean, four betting's the way, if people have learned how to three bet, but they haven't really learned the game tree beyond that, then that's the way, yep.
For me, the modal Russian has a three bet stat of sixteen. It's just bananas.
Please, please, please.
Call or squeeze?
I'm.
Or jam, probably not jam, I would call.
Oh, never fold. Just a call?
I think fold.
Yeah. I like the fold.
We're a little short, and it's the worst space wheel.
Here we are folding.
Yeah, I think it's fold. We have a queen.
Fold. Yeah, feels bad.
That ten as well is pretty bad, right? Yeah, just. Two, two.
So if that queen ten suited, let's say it was too late position configurations, is it a call then, or it's still bad?
Uh, Jager would be, would be a lot.
I'd be able to jam, yeah.
It could be even just not all in, three bets to make people call.
We're moving hijacking, but you're gonna see it. Yeah.
We were button, right?
And that.
So if you go hijack cutoff would be the most extreme. Then it pure jams.
Then it becomes a jam. So say it's like low jack, high jack. Uh, mixing, right?
Interesting.
So, but like, whenever.
This actually makes sense a lot if you think about how the range is in, uh, ICM, how they go.
Jam.
All in, all in, right?
Yeah, I like, I like jam.
Right.
Mainly call.
Just the box. Yeah, cool. It's gonna be ace.
Queen.
I think ace ten's gonna be the bluff.
Ace queen.
I think it's still calling.
Can three bet not all in?
I think it's still calling.
Ace queen, ace queen. I might go all in.
I might go in as well.
Oh. We have no all in, okay.
Yeah, it's the big blind.
Yeah.
Yeah, thirty-two, too much. Against under the gun. Fold.
Fold. Yeah. Fold.
I like folding.
Fold.
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 Yeah, okay.
We want, uh, king jack.
Oh, it's even raising a bit.
Just the slider. Queen?
All in.
Sixty big blinds.
Yeah, I think so.
No.
I mean.
Ace.
Yeah.
Probably wouldn't be too bad, but yeah.
Well, yeah.
Maybe sixty's a bit big.
Make it thirty-two. It's there.
It's in ICM.
Yeah. Two, two, call?
Easy call, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's doing everything with everything.
Just losing E V to.
Fold.
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 That's pretty good, yeah.
See you, guys. I gotta go. Thanks.
Thanks for dropping in. See you, Kelly.
Time to fold.
How often are we squeezing here? Never, okay.
It's gonna be ace jack.
Call?
Fold.
Short, right? But we can, mine, I think it's still like.
I think it's a cool. I think it's cool.
It scanned the cutoff sometimes. No, it's a.
No.
If likes, fold there.
Evans?
I mean, we're probably not gonna realize our equity cuz of how short the, uh, lowjack is.
Yeah. Alright, guys, we're gonna wrap it up.